All rise please. My intentions to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Before the start of tonight's regular meeting, the Board met in executive session. We discussed the upcoming PBA contract. We're making some progress and hopefully we'll have a decision, an agreement before the end of this year or shortly after the New Year. Any visitors to public comment tonight? I'd like to welcome Greg Atanasio. Give it to me again.
Jeff Atanasio.
Jeff Atanasio, who's going to be our new engineer, municipal engineer going forward. Because this one's leaving us against our protest. All right, like, has any visitors to public comments? Didn't see any hands going up. All right, we're going to be closed on Monday, on Tuesday, December 25th because of Christmas, and then Tuesday, January 1st for New Year's. Board of Supervisors reorganization meeting is Monday, January 7th, 4 o'clock.
We have to set that. I have that under my...
To be determined later on today. The Board of Auditors reorganization meeting is Tuesday, January 8th at 7:00 p.m. The next regularly scheduled meeting of this board is January 15th at 7:00 p.m. Christmas tree drop-off. We haven't even had Christmas yet. We have to have this announcement. Christmas tree drop-off is at New Britton Road, entrance to Central Park, anytime between December 27th and February 10th. Doylestown Township Park and Recreation, in partnership with Premier World's Discoveries, offering two trips. That's the California Rail Trail Discovery and Rome Country Roads of Tuscany. So, visit our admin site for more information or to doylstownrec.com. Gift-giving ideas. Okay, we've got, ready? Movie tickets, ski tickets, bicentennial bricks, hats and clothing, Parks and Rec gift certificates, park benches, mural print, Dog's Valley Doylestown poster, which is a bicentennial project, and Kids Castle bricks. You can donate your way. I love that little tagline, donate your way, because the bricks are going to be part of the walkway that surrounds the new additions to the castle. And for $125, you can have your brick inscribed and it's laid into this beautiful walkway. And if you're really nice, they'll do a certificate for you so you can give it as a Christmas gift. So, keep that in mind. Regular meeting from the December 4, 2018 meeting. We've got minutes to approve. Any motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions, changes, corrections, Rick?
No.
All in favor of approval of the minutes from the December 4 meeting?
Aye.
Any nays? Nope, no, Rick?
I know, I'm so far.
Reports from the solicitor.
Things I have to talk about will be later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
All right, Chief.
Just want the Board to acknowledge that I received a letter of resignation from Sergeant Justin Noddy-Fresco, effective January 6. He has accepted a position with the Federal Bureau of Investigation and he starts with them on the 7th. This is probably a two-year endeavor that he's been going through trying to get this position and I'd like to wish him well.
We all do. Thanks, Chief. And we'll be interviewing police officers on the 14th and 15th of January.
Correct.
I know this creates hardship on your end because of people leaving. And it seems like it happens. And at the same time, I think it's a tribute to the training and the qualifications you give a guy. So, I think this is a good thing.
Justin's at least the fourth or fifth officer we've had become FBI agents. And if you remember back in August, I guess Detective Breslau left and he is now with the Homeland Security.
All good.
Yep, all good.
Okay, Township Engineer.
I have a couple of things this evening. As much as I wanted to say nothing. First, myself, Stephanie, Dave and a couple of others met with Jeff last week. We had our, let's call it our first of probably more than one transition meeting. We discussed ongoing projects, file transfers and all the other stuff. So, that is ongoing and I'm sure Jeff will be ready to hit the street running come January 7th. Second is an update on the township's 2018 MS-4 permit. As you remember, we submitted our notice of application in September of 2017, along with some mapping and some other information. On September 19th, 2018, DEP finally gave us our technical deficiency letter. And we knew it was coming because I had been to a couple of seminars and there said everybody was getting a technical deficiency letter. We met with DEP at the end of October to discuss, you know, the letters and the comments. And they've, they're requiring additional information on the mapping, which will lead to additional sediment load reduction BMPs being required. They're basically mapping the entire township's drainage areas to certain outfalls. They've revised or updated, as they say, their definitions of what an outfall is. They're supposed to be all these points at a stream. It's not up at the road before the stream. So, they've, they say they haven't changed the rules. I disagree, but that's beyond, that's beyond the point. So, after our meeting, we're, basically what I'm in the process of doing is revising all the maps. We had given them an outfall map of the entire township. As you know, GHD has been inspecting the outfalls. The township has over 350, well, had over 350 outfalls based on, let's call it, the 2013's definition of outfalls. There will still be, you know, about 300 outfalls and observation points. So, you know, we're, again, it's what you want to call things. So, we are in the process of revising that map as per current requirements. We are also providing what is called, what we're calling a parsed area map because we're allowed to take out certain areas of the township out of the sediment load reduction planning area. These areas include the other entities that have MS-4 permits, like PennDOT. So, we're taking out all the PennDOT road right-of-way area. One of the bigger ones is the County of Bucks has their own permit. So, we can take out the, all the land that Bucks, the county hasn't. And they have a lot of area in the township.
We know, yeah.
And so, you know, we're doing that in any area, any private area that drains directly to a stream and that does not co-mingle with municipal drainage or flow. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been very tedious. So, after that, GHD is the ones that provided the township's total maximum daily load plan, basically the reductions in sediment load. We presented this back in August. You know, it's about an inch-thick book. So, they, they will then have to redo the sediment load reduction calculations. They will then have to go out and find BMPs to reduce the load, whether it's additional basins that they can convert, more stream restorations. I mean, you know, they'll have to look for those things. So, they've provided a, basically an estimate, a proposal to do this additional work. I know that they provided it to Stephanie and it's in front of you.
Yep.
I have also provided, you know, a cost estimate on what it's, you know, going to take, let's say, pickering to do this additional work.
I don't see his. I emailed that out to you the other day. And you sent it on Monday.
So, I guess there's two things this evening. One is, you know, acceptance of, you know, GHD's proposal. And the second portion is that, as I mentioned, these plans are, you know, are ongoing. We're approximately 80% done, the mapping. It is going to extend into next year. And I foresee our, well, we can, we can do this one of two ways. I think it's the best interest of the township if I continue on this project. Discuss it with Jeff and Boucher and James and, you know, they have no problem me continuing with this. Or I can just ride off into the sunset and dump it on their lap. I do not believe that would be very cost-effective on the township's part, but I'm leaving that up to the Board since, you know, you said you've appointed the new engineer to start.
What do you want to do? You want to continue with this?
I am ready, willing and able to continue. I believe it's the best for the township that I, you know, there's a lot of history and back and forth.
Yep.
The mapping itself should be done in the next couple of weeks. What the procedure has been is that we'll take this mapping and submit it unofficially to DEP electronically. They will look at the mapping, basically review it and, you know, the comment on it, basically sign off on it unofficially. After that, then GHD does all their calculations and their BMPs and everything. When that is finished, that gets submitted to DEP, again unofficially, so that, you know, the DEP can review it and comment on it. So, hopefully then that gets, you know, an unofficial blessing. Because we're adding additional BMPs and doing additional planning area, we will have to have another public participation meeting. So, that'll happen, I guess, February, March. But after that, we then officially submit everything to DEP and by that, it should be a rubber stamp of them giving us the permit. That's, you know, I've met with DEP a couple of times and that's where we've set up as a procedure.
All right, Sarah, we have two things before us.
Just a couple of questions.
Mario, of the 300-plus outfalls that we have, how many of those does GHD really monitor? They don't do all 300, do they?
Not, not now. They, when this all started back in 2005, 2003, 2005, what they requested that, you know, basically go map all your outfalls and take your municipality and say, "Cut it in fours." GHD cut it in three because of the septic areas. And they said that over that five-year period, to monitor all your outfalls over that five-year period. So, basically they were saying, you know, "Take 25% a year," whatever. And then, and then after that, you would monitor those outfalls which you found illicit discharges on. Basically what GHD is doing. I believe they spot-check some of the others that would be near where they're, where they find the hotspots just to, just so that, you know, they can see it's not, that there aren't any illicit discharges.
Right.
The new permit, if I read it correctly, if I remember correctly, you're supposed to monitor all your outfalls only once over the next five-year period, so.
So, it's less?
Yes, less monitoring.
Oh. Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Mario? All right, Sarah, is everyone good with Mario continuing on to, since he's already 80% done to completion and reporting to the DEP?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to approve that proposal?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then we have another decision to make with GHD proposal dated December 12, 2018, supporting the process as well with an additional, whatever, $20,000 compensation for their project. Is there a motion to approve the GHD proposal?
Just a question on that. Is that $20,000 similar to other years?
I think it's about the same. And Mario was surprised how low it was, actually, when he...
Then I won't question it.
Motion to approve. Second? Is there a second?
Seriously.
More than a second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thanks, Mario. Director of Operations, Municipal Complex. Are you not done yet?
Well, I've got one more thing, if I may.
No, there's not anything else on there.
He's going out in style.
You want to wait till the end or you want to do it now?
I'd rather do it now.
Okay.
I would, I just want to thank this Board, all previous Boards and the residents of the township. It's been a pleasure, you know, serving them and this Board. It's been a pleasure working with the township's staff, other consultants, everybody. It's, the trust, the, you know, the help, the guidance that I've been given by everybody here has made the last 18 years, you know, very easy to do my job. And it's been, it's been a really good run. I just want to thank everybody and, you know, just let everybody know.
Thank you, Mario.
Thank you, Mario.
It's one thing about you, Mario, and I don't know how long I've been on the Board, 16 years or whatever, there's, I've never had to doubt my mind about what you were saying. I just trusted you completely.
That's true.
So, I've never had any reason to question you and I've always accepted what you said as true. Thank you. If you made a mistake along the way, I don't know about you. So, don't tell me now.
I've got something to sign, for you to sign on the way out.
Before we leave that, just a related question, but nothing for Mario, it's more for Dave and Stephanie. For GHD, when they proceed, will we be proceeding with the asset management system?
Yeah, there's an MS-4 component attached to that and that's one of the reasons why we picked the CS-Datum program to do that. So, at the beginning of the year, we'll meet with CS-Datum and schedule training and bring in GHD to work with us to do that.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
All right, can I move on, Ellen? Director of Operations, Municipal Complex.
Yes, you have a proposal in front of you for approval of Electrotech change order number two. It consists of four change orders in total that Electrotech submitted. That, the change order in total is $8,157.21. It consists of changes to the asset, the access control conduit. That was a cost reduction. The interior lighting plan, that was a cost reduction. The site lighting was an increase and then also revisions to the power distribution plan. I'm asking for your approval for that.
Okay, before we get there, Ken, I think we can agree to this that the change orders that we've had are still within a small percentage of the entire...
Yeah, it's down around 1%, or something.
A calculation, if you approve this change order, it will be 1.5% of the total construction cost.
So, we're still well below a typical average of percentage of change. So, we're doing well in that regard.
Yes.
As big as this complex is, as many opportunities there is for a mess-up, we're doing fairly well, right?
And we still fight every one we get.
Yeah, we still fight every one we get. All right, is there a motion to approve this change order?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions or other comments, all in favor? Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, Public Works Furniture. Mr. Tomko?
Yes, I have a question in front of you to approve Tanner Furniture Proposal to purchase furniture for the Public Works Parks and Roads Department offices. Originally received a proposal from another office furniture company totaling $22,000 and change. We worked with Tanner and Rick brought them in and we really knocked that down and worked hard with them. We're going to recycle a little bit of the furniture and that total is $11,817.09 and I'm asking for your approval to execute that proposal.
I just want to say, this is an excellent reuse of resources. Congratulations, Rick. This was a good job. You cut that cost in half by looking at what we had and just repurposing it, though. Good job, thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, anything else, Mr. Tomko?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. We saw the J.D. Bravo summary of what's going on so far to date. It was sent to you electronically, yes? Everyone got that? Manager?
All I have is that we do need to set the time for the reorganization meeting.
4 o'clock. I propose 4 o'clock. Anybody else have another time?
I would prefer 5 or 7 o'clock to make it consistent with their meeting times next year.
Okay. Anybody else have another time? You don't care? Rick, you don't care?
I don't like earlier better.
Earlier better? I like 4 because the staff can come. They're still here. 5 is okay, but that's why I always go for 4. I mean, Ken, do you care?
No.
All right, I propose 4. Is there a motion to that effect or, if there's no motion to approve 4? Is there a second?
Second.
Why don't you do 4:30 and everybody will be happy.
I hate it, half-hours.
4:30 would be much better for me.
Thank you, Mr. Mediator. 4 is on the table, is there a motion, is there a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay, okay. All right, you can get it next time. All right, anything else, Ms. Mason?
That is all I have at the moment.
Okay, Supervisors. Ryan, you got anything?
First, oh my gosh, not so hard. I just have one update from the TAB Committee. The Telecommunications Advisory Board completed its commitment to produce a summary bicentennial celebration video. They also got some footage from today. It runs 19 minutes long and it was placed in the time capsule. A version, including the video from today's festivities, will be available on our website and our DVD channel. Everybody watches.
Rick, you have anything?
Yes, Planning Commission met and various subjects, but the main one in my mind was Toll Brothers. And I often talk about the great group of volunteers we have. And I'd just like to take, it was, I've been 16 years affiliated with the Planning Commission and this was, I was very impressed myself. They had the right questions. They drilled down Toll Brothers. The Toll Brothers left with a binder full of things that they had to do in order to get past our Planning Commission. The questions and the insights, we had residents from Doylestown and also Warrington. And it was the Chair of the Warrington Board of Supervisors? Or she's just a member?
I'm not sure.
She's just a visitor? Yeah, surely. And they were impressed with how our Planning Commission was so much on the ball and able to get their points across with the Planning Commission. I'll just take a minute and it's maybe a clarion call, if you will, for volunteers. I mean, the Chief's interviewing, so if you want to be a police officer, he'll take care of that. But if you want to volunteer on one of our committees, it's a great opportunity. It's a great thing to do for your community and you'll learn a lot and have, it's only one to two hours a month. It's not, it's not a lot, one to two hours a month. And there's no specific skill required. The mixture of all the diverse backgrounds even adds to the committee meetings. Even, I just mentioned the Planning Commission meeting. You don't need any skill. You'll be able to pick up the speed. And I mean, Ken and I were on the Planning Commission and that wasn't our background by any stretch of the imagination. And we both did stellar, if I might say. So...
Did I was on the Planning Commission too? Not all the Planning Commission.
So, this just shows you how stellar the whole Planning Commission is.
Yay!
So, if you look at, go to the website. There's all of our committees on there. Look at them. If you've got an hour or two a month for your community, give Stephanie a call. She can give you more details and more insights. So, hopefully we'll get some interest.
Thanks, Rick. Ken?
Nothing to add right now.
Ken?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Well, we had our last meeting of the, well, almost the last meeting of the bicentennial committee. And today, as you heard, we had our, we implanted the time capsule. And in the time capsule was a video hello to the future, to our residents and township people 100 years from now. So, hopefully that video survived. We put in equipment that should work with it, to replay it, and many, many other contributions from the community when the time capsule, and we all were there when, you know, it was sealed and threw down and then put into, put into the ground. It was a really terrific event. And the post office was here to frank all of our post, you know, our holiday cards. It was, it was a wonderful occasion wrapping up over 20 events this past year for our bicentennial. We have one final meeting in February. So, just so you know, we have some money to disperse at the end of it because we raised enough that we can give, do something with it from the bicentennial committee. And then we'll be closing down after that. The committee will be closing down. All right, so that's all I have and we're moving on to next item.
If I could just make one comment about that. I tried to attend to the majority of the bicentennial events.
Yes, you did.
And I must say, that committee worked their butts off.
Sure did.
To, for a startup, six, I guess it was in the middle of last year is when you really kind of started moving. But when you plan all those events that happened throughout the whole year and the effort and the dedication, the fundraising and the amount of work that went into it. So, I thank all those bicentennial committee members out there. They did a great job and thank you, Barb, for being the liaison.
It was action-packed and my pleasure. Good group of people. All right, thank you for that. Public hearing, none unfinished business, none new business. Land development, Central Bucks YMCA. That's okay, I was just going to tell everybody what we're doing.
The applicant has submitted amended final plan for the Central Bucks family YMCA facilities located in the township. Plans were originally prepared by Gilmore Associates and dated January 4, 2008. The last revision that's before you tonight is dated September 14, 2018. The original plans proposed a two-phase expansion of the existing facilities. Amended plan proposes to modify the prior approval by removing the fieldhouse and another small building addition and increasing the size of Wellness Center addition from 7,000 square feet to approximately 5,800 square feet. The new plans propose a new entrance addition to measure approximately 1,705 square feet and a new two-story addition to the northeast corner of the building containing approximately 19,669 square feet. Your Planning Commission recommended approval at its meeting on November 26, 2018, subject to conditions. I have reviewed the various reports. I have generated a list of conditions. I have shared those with Mr. Clay. He agrees they are appropriate.
Wait, you have to go up there and agree that they're appropriate?
Well, after I read them through. If you're ready to have me do that.
Yeah, are you ready to have him do that?
I am.
Thank you.
If the Board was of a mind to approve the amended final plan, following conditions would be applicable. Continued compliance with the conditions of the previously approved final plans for the development, subject to the modifications set forth in amended final plan and also subject to the further conditions noted tonight. Applicant shall remove at least two sheds that are encroaching into the front yard. Setback may be encroaching on the PennDOT right-of-way. If there's more than two, they'll all be removed. Next, compliance with the Pickering Courts and Somerson Review Letter dated November 2, 2018. Next, compliance with the Boucher and James Review Letter dated November 6, 2018. Compliance with the Michael Baker International Review Letter dated November 8, 2018. Compliance with S.E. Engineers, Inc. Letter dated November 9, 2018. Applicant to take necessary steps to have the emergency access at Lower State Road prepared for a snow event. Additional bicycle racks shall be provided to promote the bike and hike trail with the understanding that the number and placement of the bicycle racks be subject to approval of the Township Manager. Applicant to execute a storm wear maintenance agreement to form satisfactory to the Township. Proceed of all permits and approvals, many agencies having jurisdiction, including Conservation District and PennDOT are applicable. Funding and execution of offensive security agreements form satisfactory to Township Solicitor. Applicant to pay all costs incurred by the Township regarding the application. And lastly, plans shall be ADA compliant. Mr. Clay, do you agree to those conditions?
The applicant agrees.
All right. Does anybody on the Board have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Does anyone from the, any representative from the Y have any questions or comments? Nope. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the amended final plan for the Central Bucks YMCA?
I make a motion, we approve the final amended land development plan for the Central Bucks YMCA.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, second, and is there any other comments or questions before I call? Hearing none, calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? You're good.
Thank you very much.
Good to go, thank you, thanks for coming. All right, we're removing the historic significance of two-two-two-five, uh, five Lower State Road. Next item on the agenda is the Township Audit, RFPs, and there's a memo from Ken Wallace suggesting that we approve Major and Mastro. Everyone had the opportunity to review?
Yes.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve Major and Mastro?
Sir Accountant.
I make the motion to approve Major and Mastro.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Ken. Pebble Ridge Woodridge Area Sewer Project, payment.
Excuse me, Barb, I didn't hear a...
Okay, aye.
That was five and oh.
It was a five and aye.
She choked out a yes down there.
I didn't twist her arm, I didn't do nothing.
From the accountant at the other end of the dais, okay. Payment Number Two Request for Payment. There's a letter from Mr. Matacolo.
Yes, this is for the Pebble Ridge Woodridge. This is for the pump station, the general mechanical with Alameda and Houdak, for a hundred and six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. This would be the payment application number two, which would go through the Pennvest process.
Everyone review this? It's okay to do? Yes?
Just had one question on it, I, I was reading and I didn't see, is this tied to a milestone completion, or when do these checks, when does this request come in? At what, is it a timetable, or is it a milestone deliverable?
I think as they progress through the process, I mean, as far as I know, they were, last time we met with them, they anticipated full completion probably in the next couple months, so it's probably a milestone completion aspect of where they're at in the process of the pump station. So they're moving along.
So they're, we're just still in the pump station?
This is just the pump station.
This is just the pump station.
Just the pump station, okay.
All right? Mm-hmm, you good?
Yeah.
All right. Everyone all right? Any questions? Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the disbursement of under six thousand?
Move to approve.
Okay, eight hundred and seventy-five. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. All right, Dawson Township Final Budget. Schedule H was delivered separately.
I make a motion, we approve the final budget. We all worked very, very extremely hard over the last six, seven months with constant back and forth, so I make a motion, we approve the final budget.
Moving to approve the final budget includes the Schedule H to that budget, you're okay?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, very good. Sir, second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Final budget is approved. Excellent.
If I could just make one question on it, I mean, and I'm sure everyone has read the commentary in the, in the budget book, which is, and there's two sections on it. I thought the comments were exceptional, and I applaud the staff and Stephanie and Ed and everybody who works on it.
And Wallace.
Well, I meant, yeah, everybody, yeah, he's sitting right there. Everybody who works on it. I thought the, the commentary really lays out the individual items, and it was an exceptionally great job. So every year, we keep getting better and better at this, so thank you, everybody, Ken, who was, who was part of this process, so, great job.
Jill, all the heads of departments and everything, thank you.
Yes, everybody.
Everybody. Resolution Number Twenty Eighty-three, next item on the agenda, fixing the tax rate for fiscal year. It is an increase, everybody, of one-half mil, which we learned equates to twenty dollars a household. So everyone should know that, going up a half mil. And it's going to probably go up again next year, just giving you everybody a preview. So we're all on the same page. We may not agree next year that it's going to go up again, but for this year, the tax rate includes a one-half mil increase. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Eighty-three?
Move to approve Resolution Twenty Eight.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Not from Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, three a, three yeses and two nays. Nobody's going to get stuck in you, Christmas tree. Treasury Report, December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the bills list from December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, now we next have recognition of two of our most beloved members of our Dawson Township Administration Community. Mario, we've already heard from, and our Parks Superintendent Butch Dietrich, who was like one of the first guys I met on-site Oktoberfest with Dick John and Rick Shea and the guys who dug the ditches for water and electrical lines and so on, so Butch has been, has been the Parks Superintendent. He's created, helped create our beautiful parks, helped maintain our beautiful parks, and you are going to be really missed, missed, but so well-deserved that this time that you go and build something somewhere else. So we have, we have proclamations for you, and let's do one at a time.
Let's do Mario first.
Mario first.
Yes.
Mario, I'm afraid, where do you, we're going to do this up at the...
Up at the podium.
You've got to go up to the podium. Come on, Mario. Who do you want to come with you? Anybody here? Do you want like Dave Tomko or somebody like that? Rick Shea? Do you have a...
Stephanie.
Do you have a favorite, like township person you want to stand up here?
Oh, that's the sort of spot.
The board is his favorite.
Well, this is a beautiful...
To the mic.
This is a beautiful, this is a beautiful tile, and it's a, wait, it says presented to...
There's two for Butch.
There's two for Butch, yeah.
It was the reflection.
One for each arm, yeah.
Mario, this eighteenth day, December two thousand and eighteen, by the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors upon your retirement from Pickering Courts and Somerson, Inc., Township Engineer, we thank you for your many years of service to Doylestown Township. And it's really beautiful. There, congratulations.
Thank you.
So welcome. And, here's a resolution. That says a lot of this stuff, but you were appointed on January seventh, nineteen eighty-five. You worked for Pickering. You oversaw many miles of paving roads and designed and oversaw the installation of drainage projects within the township. You oversaw site development of hundreds of new homes within the township, reviewed thousands of grading permits, assisted the township with a state mandated stormwater compliance and flood plain, plain management requirements, and you oversaw the site engineering for the new, big one, Doylestown Township Municipal Complex. So along with you, you've been so great to us as township, you've been sponsors to our park system and to our Township Bicentennial, your steadfast guidance in assisting the township in dealing with a multitude of engineering issues has shaped us, has shaped Doylestown Township and the township community, and enabled us to be responsive to the needs of our many residents. So this was signed today and is proclaimed, this is all confirmation, ah, right? We did this? So congratulations.
Thank you.
We will miss you.
Thank you, Mario.
Except you can't retire until we're done with the stormwater management stuff, right? All right, Butch, your turn, you have to come up here, okay?
That's the gift. It's a present.
So do you want to say anything? He got to say something.
Into the mic.
God, you can talk.
I won't let the door hit me in the ass on the way out.
Well, that's to the point.
Tom wants to get rid of me.
Oh, who wants to get rid of you? Nobody wants to get rid of you.
But anyway, yeah. Now, it's been fun, sometimes challenging, other times, you know, really missed the Oktoberfest.
I bet.
You know, and, you know, Mario's pencil drawings of bridges and...
There you go.
But, you know, yeah, it's been, it's been a ride.
You're an institution here.
Yeah, probably should be institutionalized.
Well, you also have a beautiful Mercer Tile Plaque, and it says, presented to Dietrich Butch Frolik, this eighteenth day of December, two thousand and eighteen, by us, the Dawson Township Board of Supervisors, acknowledging your retirement on December thirty-first, and we thank you for your thirty-five years of dedicated service to Doylestown Township. She's crying, she crying? She's always crying.
She's always crying.
Are you crying? And then we have a proclamation as well, a resolution, sorry. And you've been employed here since nineteen eighty-three, and you were with the Public Works Department for thirty-five years, and you were Assistant Roadmaster in June nineteen ninety, and then you were appointed Park Superintendent, so right, so far, April nineteen ninety-five, and you provided services to the township for the past thirty-five years, earning your, your commercial driver's license and spraying license, assisted in the initial construction of Kids Castle in nineteen ninety-seven, as well as its renovation in two thousand and fifteen. You helped with the construction of various bike and hike trails, pedestrian bridges, installed components for the Century Trail, installed equipment for the fitness stations, as well as play equipment throughout our parks, assisted in construction of the Doylestown Dog Park, set up the grounds for the annual Oktoberfest event from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and eight, installed the ban shelf for the Performing Arts Series, as well as many other events, and you helped with the annual tree planting and all the bicentennial events for this year. So you've received many accolades from residents and non-residents regarding the maintenance you and your crews have performed in all the township parks, making the parks in Doylestown Township pleasant, well-maintained, safe areas for the public to enjoy, and I would also say nationally recognized. Your efforts are nationally recognized, and we know that the township parks have won many statewide awards, and you are responsible for a large part of that. You are responsible for that. We'll never be able to...
Good crew.
Yeah, you and your good crew. But it's all started from top down, right, Stephanie? Butch Frolik has worked diligently and professionally in cooperation with the Director of Parks and Rec, the Doylestown Police Department, all the volunteer boards and committees, to ensure a safe environment for all visiting Doylestown Township. And this is an amazing thing. We're going to miss you, but you earned this retirement.
Mm-hmm.
Best wishes. Oh, yes.
What is this?
Here, I'll hold it, and you can, you can just, you can describe what's happening here.
Excuse me, but...
Make sure you can get the picture, though. We need Butch over here, so he's all, all part of one picture.
Okay, talk about what this is.
This is a sign that was recommended by your wonderful staff, Rick Shea, who suggested it, and everybody supported the idea, and I especially appreciate the Board of Supervisors